Recording is on.
There now he's got it. It's going now. This meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I apologize for that delay. Uh, now we're going to come back and uh, we did set the uh, date for the hearing on Article thirty-two, which is procedures for the uh clustered risk uh, clustered residential conservation district, and that's Article thirty-two, and then Article thirty-three, which are the um, details about the clustered residential clustered, I'm sorry, conservation district. So, those two articles will have their hearing on May twenty-two at seven thirty-five P M. With that, now we'll come back and I'd like to recess our meeting and we'll come back uh to the regular meeting following the uh, the hearing for uh, Mr. Hershey, if that's going to move forward. I understood though that there's the possibility, Mr. Hershey, you were going to withdraw your application.
Yes, sir. I'd like to withdraw my application submitted last month for to make amendments.
Okay. Um, let's see. The right one. Got it here. Mr. Hershey, okay. Um, since you're going to withdraw, uh, so we won't open the hearing, but would you come up? I need you to place a signature on this form that you're withdrawing. You were, sir, sign up. Can you tell where it is? It's a, where's the signature line? Right there. Oh. And then if you would date it, please, sir. All right. Thank you.
Very good.
Appreciate that. So I think that Mr. Hershey will be back in June with another application. Okay. It's not quite eight o'clock, but uh, we're moving along. We're going to be able to start that one on time. Um. Mr. Cannon, I think we may have time for you to just quickly go through your report. We'll get that part done and then we will recess uh to open up the other hearing.
Sure. I just want to take a couple of minutes, just, just to update you very quickly on we're seeing on our permits right now with thirty-one. That's, that's compared to really, that's the end of the month, and this is only the first and, and the forty-fourth last year is in, that's all comparison. So we're, we're, you know, we're basically thirteen behind and very first month, last month. Uh, as far as the open enforcement issues, we have two, the Harlem Road and the six oh five uh, that you see on there. Right now they're uh, their prosecutor has those in his lap, actually sent me a message today saying that he got both his letters back and uh, one of them was, one of them was unlivable and the one of them that they couldn't find a person to sign for him. So I guess that I'm all both of them. So he's going to find a different mode of delivering those, those two letters to those people and then go on from there, which we're, we're anticipating it's probably just going to go to the court of common pleas. Switched gears on the Lewis Road one. Uh, we have got two. Corey does not feel based on pictures that we're getting that he can pursue that one, but we get better pictures. And I'm working right now with the property owners to see if one they want to pursue it or the complainants still want to pursue it. And if they do, they can give me some pictures. Just from where I go, I can't get any better pictures. I can't get off their property. Uh, the COVID drive, I went by there today. Uh, it actually is making more progress. It's, it's a lot cleaner. It's, his second dumpster is gone. I'm assuming a third dumpster is going to show up.
Wow.
I'll keep up. We're gonna. That it's a, he's making, making some good gains on that, which is encouraging. Green Cook, uh, I'm going to revisit that. I was going to take that off my list, but after reading something in, in the file I have on that, I think I'm going to revisit what we're going to do with that. I'm going to talk with Corey about it. The new one on fifty-nine oh one Harlem Road, it looks like he's cleaning that property up pretty well. He's got it straightened up and actually then one next to it's looking really, really good. There's nothing new coming up for potential zoning committee uh, issues, unless something comes with the dump truck issue on Center Village Road, which that's with Corey now also. And he sent a letter on that one. I think that's probably going to go the way of litigation. And then uh, properties is not, you guys, that's basically it. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Cannon? Okay.
Good progress.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mike, for uh, the follow-up. It's, it's important. All right, at this time now, we can uh, go out of session again on recess and open uh, the hearing for um, as it was advertised, is for Article uh, thirty-one, which is the uh, procedures for mixed use. Um, Tom, I'm going to ask you if you would kind of, you and Molly, oh, I didn't introduce Molly and I apologize, Molly. Molly Ridge is a planner with uh, Crossroads Community Planning. Um, the principal, the president, uh, Holly is not with us tonight, but Molly is uh, present so that she can, as we go through this, we will be, she will be sharing information with us and potentially uh, responsive to questions that we may have. Um, at this point, we know that uh, there were changes that were made. Draft two is up on the township website and Molly's bringing that up now, uh, and we're doing a share screen. So hopefully yours, well, we got one projector over here that's not working. Uh, the one on my left, your right, is uh, got the document projected on it. Okay, um, we did receive uh, the recommendations, the review and the recommendations from Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, and we do need to then walk through those, but the, this draft that we have now has uh, changes that we discussed on April twenty-fourth, correct?
Correct.
Um, that's draft two. So what you're seeing is an updated draft based upon the discussion that took place on the twenty-fourth. Now, tonight, we're going to need to go through these Delaware County Regional Planning Recommendations, and we have received those. Uh, I'll tell you what, Tom, let me just quickly give an overview here because there's staff comments uh, that are not specific, but in general. Um, the comments basically that I'm going to summarize for you are not recommendations for any specific changes, but they're identifying um, what these articles are about. Mixed, uh, this is direct uh, from the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, the staff. Staff comments, uh, mixed-use District A encompasses roughly one thousand one hundred and twenty-five acres of land between Maple Grove Cemetery east to the Township County Line. It includes several large undeveloped parcels. Mixed-use District B encompasses roughly a hundred and sixty acres of land between Harlem Road and District A. It includes approximately eighty-five acres of undeveloped land plus the Westerville Estates manufactured home park. Given that growth pressures continue to come north from Columbus and New Albany areas, the city of Columbus has initiated the planning and construction of a tunnel which will bring sewer service to this part of Delaware County, and the recent announcement by Intel is making significant investments in Lincoln County just to the east of Harlem Township. And it's taking, Harlem Township is taking a provocative step in updating, a proactive step in updating its zoning code.
Holly, do you have a copy of the regional planning's comments?
I do.
All right, with that um, overall view, then we will address some specific uh, recommendations that have come from regional planning and work our way through that. In Article thirty-one, there are some recommendations that we will now address, Tom?
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is uh, pass out this master list of changes um, that I printed off, which includes both the suggested uh, changes for consideration that we got from Delaware Regional Planning Commission um, and some other changes that we, we might want to consider.
Yeah, I have.
Uh, and maybe. Okay. Um. So uh, on this particular article, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, a total of uh, uh, seven changes to consider or that have already been uh, been implemented. Uh, the first um, Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, Commission suggested that we change the title of Article thirty-one uh, because they found it confusing that we were calling it a planned unit development district when we already had a P U D. So we've taken that out. We now call the article, we now entitle the article, procedure to apply for a mixed-use overlay district. Period. Um, and following that, section thirty-one oh one, the purpose is within the Harlem Township zoning resolate, resolution, and this will change the wording slightly, specific mixed-use overlay districts are provided and adopted pursuant to O R C five nineteen oh twenty-one C, uh, planned unit developments. All proposed developments in said district shall follow the procedure outlined in this article.
Does Molly have this list?
Okay.
Good. Uh, so that basically um, conforms to the suggestion that regional planning made. Uh, number two, uh, they asked that we add regional uh, to their title. We had Delaware County Planning Commission. They said it's not. Should be Delaware County Regional Planning Commission. We'd already picked that up. So that one's done. Uh, number three, um, uh, this was um, the consult with the, so this is now our thirty-one uh,
Thirty-one oh one.
Yeah, they, they were using the old number, so we can't go over that. Um, this is now um, so that, what I've just, what I've just gone through are the first two bullet points on the list that I gave you. The third bullet point, section thirty-one oh three, uh, trip generation and connectivity memo. Um, the only change is something that I suggested, which, which, which is under number four, that we expand that to read uh, the information contained in the trip generation and connectivity memo. We spell that out uh, rather than just leave it as contained in the memo. Um, I don't think that's very controversial, controversial, but if there's any suggestion we not do it. Um, and if we go on to, so the, the, the only other comment that Delaware County Regional Planner had was that uh, the third-party uh, review uh, that we were asking for uh, might cause conflict with the Delaware County Engineers' Office Recommendations. Um, and Holly said that she had already gone, that she had sat down with Delaware County Engineering's, Engineering Office and had worked through all this, and the wording is basically what they're comfortable with, that they get the first shot at it. Uh, if we have any concerns, uh, we can bring in a third-party engineer and work through that. Um, and they're not, they're not opposed to that. So I think what we will do is leave the wording as is. Uh, we've considered the recommendation from Delaware County Regional, which is what we've been asked to do, uh, but we don't have to necessarily follow everything they ask. Uh, so those are the three uh, items that Delaware County Regional asked us to consider. Uh, other than that, uh, going down the list in thirty-four oh four section, I added uh, the words traffic analysis or traffic impact study, rather than just study. Uh, in section thirty-one oh seven, in the title, I took the word trustees and respelled it as trustees. Unless, unless the trusties would prefer to be called trusties. I don't know. Uh, and um, and I also took out in the second paragraph where it read, the Harlem Township Board of Trustees shall, upon receipt of said application, shall review the development plan. I took out the word shall the first time, the first shall. So it reads the Harlem Township Board of Trustees, comma, upon receipt of said application, comma, shall review the development plan and the zoning commission's recommendation, et cetera. So that was just.
So they, these would be changes in terms of the wording that would now go into a draft three.
Correct.
But what we're seeing on the screen is still draft two.
Correct.
Right. Just so that uh, those of you who are looking at it at home and here in the audience understand what's happening. These are changes that will happen in draft, from draft two to the next version. Okay, Tom.
Coming down to section thirty-one twelve, about development plan approval period. Um, and the last sentence, uh, it refers to using the same procedures and criteria, and that should read using the same procedure singular. And finally, uh, on the last page, page nine, uh, where it says in red, this page intentionally left blank, uh, that should be moved to.
Blank page?
A blank page. Yes, that's what I thought. Uh, so we could put that on, on the, on the next, and that, or those are, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, those seven changes, significant or not, are the only changes to that, um, article.
Okay, so the only changes that we would potentially be looking at making in Article thirty-one are these seven.
Correct.
Okay, um, now, we have to look though at Article uh, dra- draft two, Article thirty-one, um, there is something that we need to clarify under section thirty-one oh two, pre-application discussion, because there's an alternate, there's two alternates here, and the question is then we, we can't leave it the way it is. Um, because you can't have an option for the first sentence. We either, we either uh, go with what's there uh, or we make some modifications in the first sentence.
So the way it reads now is prior to submitting a formal application and a development plan, the applicant shall engage in informal discussions with staff from the township and no more than two members of the zoning commission. Um, and the option to that is the applicant shall attend one zoning workshop meeting with the zoning commission prior to submitting a formal application.
I, I think that that option should be more like the applicant shall present preliminary information at one zoning workshop meeting prior and continue with the rest of the sentence. Just attending it says nothing to me.
Uh, I see your point.
But there is no preliminary plan to really present, because everything has been informal.
Some sort of preliminary information.
Well, it says in the paragraph, Tom, it says the applicant should provide a conceptual layout of the proposed development to allow discussion of the existing features of the site.
That's true.
Environmental limitations of the site and any utility and transportation-related matters. So I'm assuming.
Requesting some preliminary information.
Yeah, it's, it's not a, it's not a preliminary plan per se.
Right.
But there's preliminary information.
That's fine. Um, I, I, I did miss that. Are we taking out then the applicant shall engage in informal discussions with no more than two members of the zoning commission? And change that to a separate sentence. So the informal discussions with staff from the township, period. And then the applicant shall attend one zoning workshop meeting with the zoning commission prior to submitting a formal application.
Again, I think rather than attend, I would, you know, put something like present preliminary information at.
Well, let's decide on the wording, because it's important.
Attend to me means they're just going to sit in the audience or on Zoom and.
Yeah, that's attending.
Yeah.
I see your point.
So if we're, if we're putting, if we're sort of changing that so that they come to a workshop meeting ahead of time, I guess I'm not as sure what the goal of engaging in informal discussion with staff from the township is anymore. So do we need that? And if so, yeah, yeah, how are we quantifying that? You know, if I call Mike and say, hey, I think I'm going to come to next month's workshop meeting, done. You know, like that's, i- if we're not going to spell out what sort of discussion that is, then why are we telling them they have to do it? Because we can't, there's, there's nothing in there that.
Well, I, I would, I would actually suggest keeping part of that first sentence original up to, you know, with staff from the township, period.
And then there's any.
And then the applicant shall present in preliminary information at.
But what are those informal discussions then? What are, what are we as a zoning commission hoping that they achieve in those discussions?
Well.
Because if we're not hoping for them to achieve anything, then why are we making them do them?
Well, I think at the, those sort of, those meetings, they can gather information from our zoning director.
So I don't, I don't disagree with you, but then if we're having them come to that meeting in an effort to do the same thing when all of us are here and all of us can take a look at it, it just seems like, you know.
Okay, then just skip the first part and, and have them attend the workshop meeting.
I, I, I think that's a big mistake. The whole point of the informal discussion is to have some type of feedback back and forth uh, where the conceptual plan gets adjusted, um, or the conceptual layout gets adjusted.
Then can we spell that out in more detail? Because I think just saying informal discussion, like unless, unless we've given whatever staff member this is, some sort of protocol for this is what you're one, we're wanting you to do during this informal meeting.
I think it's, I think it's spelled out already, right here in this paragraph. Just that that first sentence is not doing what needs to be done. Perhaps a wording along the lines of prior to submitting a formal application and development plan, the applicant shall engage in informal discussions with staff from the township, including participating in one zoning workshop meeting with the zoning commission for um, prior to submitting a formal application. That's, and then the rest of the paragraph stays the same. Discussions, those, that then describes the kind of discussions that we're talking about that are going to take place informally with uh, staff and then also with the zoning commission at that one preliminary meeting. So if we add, if we set it up in such way, and maybe my wording wasn't exactly the way we wanted, but.
Yeah.
So, so with staff from the township, including, and we'll put follow it on there.
Okay, I said then, uh, with staff from the township, including one zoning workshop meeting with the zoning commission. And we don't need to, prior to submitting part. That starts off that, that's at the beginning. Yeah, we don't need to say it twice. So the sentence would read then, prior to submitting a formal application and development, the applicant shall engage in informal discussions with staff from the township, including one zoning workshop meeting with the zoning commission.
Period.
Period.
And everything else stays the same.
And everything else stays the same. Does that work?
Uh, I'm, I'm okay with that, but it was, was.
I said it, so I guess I like it.
Necessarily, but, Johnny, are you, you comfortable with that?
Yeah, as long as that other stuff about what they're providing with the conceptual layout and stuff is, is kept in.
Well, none, none of the rest of the paragraph would change.
So the, the, the final sentence would still read the applicant should, should provide or uh, a conceptual layout of the proposed development to allow discussion of the existing features of the site, et cetera.
Yeah.
When are they doing that? Before the informal discussion or at our workshop meeting?
Um, uh, I, I would say before the informal discussion start, this should be, should be something, a conceptual plan that you're looking at.
Ask a question?
Um, well, let me, at this point, say, let's open it up to the public and uh, Mr. uh, Eisenbaum.
So is that a requirement to move on to a formal plan, or is that their option to have these conversations?
I think it's a requirement.
It says shout, shout. It says prior to submitting a formal application.
Okay.
So, yes.
They have to do both.
They have to submit a formal application, but.
Force them to have to come to a zoning commission meeting.
Yes.
Well, that's a mistake. Now slow it down.
Not much, if at all.
Yeah, very little.
That's a mistake. So they can't submit an application if they think they know what they're doing. If they're prepared to submit an application directly to you without talking to the town or have the link to a meeting, can they do that? And why can't they?
I would say no, and it would be because we need the time to see what they're talking about.
Familiar with the process. Why do have them have to do it again?
Well, it says that they shall engage in informal discussions with staff from the township, including one meeting.
Uh, maybe they don't need to do that. They've had experience. They've done a project.
But it's a different site, and so there may be other issues with the new site as opposed to the old site.
And it'll be the first time they're dealing with, with this township.
No, I mean, you're saying.
Not necessarily.
But it's Joe.
Um, I don't, I don't think someone who's looking at a significant development uh, can't afford to spend an hour in front of us going through their ideas about how the development is going to look. And even if they know the, the, the development standards better than we do, they still got to work through each development standard and say it either deviates or doesn't. So, um, it's an extra hour or two, probably an hour of, of discussion before they actually submit a formal plan. In, in my mind, I would say it's prudent for a developer to do that, to know where they stand. But so I'm okay with that, the change, but come on, did you, you capture that or? Um, but that, that I think closes the, the discussion on this article.
I, well, wait, uh, we still have the public. I was just going to say, is there any other member of the public that has a comment that they would like to share?
Did I wait for mine or that different, is that the next one?
That's the next article.
Oh, uh, you're Mr. Miller?
That was Brian.
Right. Oh, sorry. Uh, yes.
Yep.
That, what your uh, concern is relates to Article thirty-four, so not with, not to this article, correct? So when we open that up, then yes, that's where, when we open the public, open up for public comment, that's where you should uh, share your concerns, whatever they may be, okay? Um.
I think there are no questions coming into the chat.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, with that, then we'll close the public portion and come back to the zoning commission.
So I'm okay with changing it to attending a workshop meeting, adding that in, that's fine. I don't love how the first time we get to anything that they should be bringing to us is the last sentence.
I agree.
That applicant should provide conceptual layout. Like, we get through all of this, talk to this person, talk to this person, talk to this person, about what? And we don't get to that until the very end.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see that last sentence after the first sentence. Or somewhere around there.
Yes.
I think that's a good idea.
Yes.
Um, and so so it will be. Prior to submitting a formal application, the applicant shall engage in discussions. We go through that and the applicant should. Should or shall?
Probably shall, because the first part is shall as well. I mean, this is.
Can shall. Provide a conceptual layout of proposed development to allow discussion. That's what we're talking about informal discussion. And then we go back to. Uh, discussions may also include and are strongly encouraged with all of these county. Agencies.
Yes, so we I I know you didn't read through the whole thing, but the workshop meeting is also up in that first sentence then. Okay.
Yes.
All right, the the first sentence. So that everyone knows, and we get this right, let's read it. Prior to submitting a formal application and development plan, the applicant shall engage in informal discussions. With staff from the township. And. How did I word that?
Staff from the township, including.
Including, yeah.
Zoning workshop meeting for the zoning commission. And maybe not even zoning workshop, just workshop meeting with the zoning commission.
Should that be at one workshop meeting? We need the word add in there.
Including one workshop meeting. Uh, I think it's okay.
So it says shall engage in informal discussions with staff.
On the township, including.
Including.
I I think it should be and attend, not. Including. Because that's that's less informal if you're in front of a. Public board. I'm not sure that's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's not informal at all.
As informal as the other.
Actual meaning.
So informal discussions with staff from the township and attend one zoning workshop meeting.
Okay, so you're saying. And attend. Well. This gets back to what Johnny was concerned about before using that word. Maybe you should say and participate in one. That's workshop.
That's that, yeah, that's fine with me, I'm.
That's good. And then again, you know, and participate in one workshop meeting with the zoning commission. I don't think you need to.
No, we don't need zoning prior to workshop. You're correct.
Um, and then. So a period after with the zoning commission, we start out the second sentence. Is what was the 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 last sentence?
Yes.
And then it just picks up again. We okay with that?
Yes.
Has everyone then got that? Everyone? All right, Molly, I gotta check with you because you're the one that's typing the the changes. Or did you already make them on a on another copy?
He's on the ball.
She's she's ahead of us.
Very good. All right, we don't. Do we need to read it again for everyone? We got it. We got it. All right, everyone's got it? Great. Tom, you've got it noted. And Molly has uh, recorded it. So with that, then uh, there's no other changes that. We need to review or discuss relating to. Um, Article thirty one.
I believe that's true.
Did you have something, Johnny or Brittany?
Well. I I wasn't here last time and I didn't read. I'm sorry, I haven't had read this yet.
Well, you're. Um, I've had some comments from you and I know that those comments basically were.
Did we? Did we discuss the onsite walkabout? As being part of this?
Uh, at the last period. April twenty fourth, we did discuss that briefly and it's. Not included.
Okay.
In in part because a mixed use district um, is a lot. Denser and a lot more commercial than. Um, a straight residential district and the walk through. The walkabout doesn't really have the same. Purpose. I think what we've got this conceptual layout. Um, is like the 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 site analysis maps that we look at. And that way, so we talked about it last time and we decided. Leave it out.
Okay.
But. But yes, we asked, we did ask that question. Where did it go?
So does this get recessed or?
No.
Okay.
Okay, and and then Holly also. Now, this is this Tom's list of changes.
Yes.
But Holly also sent us some. Lists of changes.
Those are the changes that are already incorporated into draft two.
Okay.
And we have these.
What I haven't had a chance to do is. Look to see. How that compared to what we were doing last twenty the twenty fourth of April.
I believe I glance to believe all the changes that we had discussed on the twenty fourth have already been put in.
That include the the. Problems we were having with um. As and Bs getting confused in different places.
Talking about the outline format?
No, we're talking about how there were a few places where. Mixed use A, mixed use B were like flip flopped in the eight and twelve.
And that's.
Oh, I see.
Next order.
Standards text, but that has.
Yeah, that would not be in this article, though, in Article thirty four.
Okay.
Uh, okay.
I I have one thing about uh, section thirty one point oh four. Um, I see we still have a minimum of ten hard copies. Um. And when we were discussing with Scott Sanders, uh, we changed in the PRCD procedure. To say, you know, a number of copies as designated by the zoning commission. So that gives us flexibility to ask for more or less. Um, do we want to change the same thing in here? So that we can designate, we have flexibility in designating how many copies we need.
I'm fine with that. I also think consistency across all the articles is good, so.
Can you pull up that wording? I don't.
Maybe.
Sure that I have it.
You're looking at section thirty one point oh four.
Yes, it's like.
The first paragraph.
The first line.
Yeah, I see it right here. And um, it it's the very first line, Molly, of section thirty one oh four.
Oh, my God, this is so long. Okay, it says. And copies as determined by the zoning commission. That's all it says. I think it should be and a number of copies as determined by the zoning commission.
Um, with a. With a, we'll take out minimum of ten and replace that with number. Of.
Hard copies.
Hard copies as determined by the zoning commission.
Yep.
comma. And we'll along with electronic copies, etc.
Yeah, I think leave that electronic.
So this will now read the applicant shall prepare and submit a formal application. And I questioned the word formal, but. Uh, and a development plan. With a number of hard copies as determined by the zoning commission. Comma, along with an electronic copy and etc, etc. So you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Molly, you got that?
Okay. Moving on.
Were there any issues with the fees?
Fees, no.
We had left those open ended as well, okay.
Hey, if there is nothing else uh, regarding uh, this Article thirty one at this point, then. We'll close this hearing and move forward um. Immediately, then I guess we don't have to uh, go back into regular session. We can go forward with uh. The next hearing. On Article thirty four.
Well, here we have the same, uh, we have a list of.
Well, before we go into the those, let's again restate that. It's our understanding that this draft we're looking at now. Has all the changes that we had addressed up through page seven. Uh, we did not complete the uh, the document. Uh, previously, so there might be a need to to work our way through pages eight to the end. But for now, we've got article, we've got pages one through seven that we have made. The changes from April twenty fourth are now incorporated in this draft. But we didn't make any changes in pages eight through the end.
Can I ask really quickly? What the procedure is? We just closed this hearing. Are we, is it coming back as draft three in an additional hearing that we need to schedule? What is it just coming back?
No, but because we can close the hearing under the revised code. And then we can take action within thirty days to uh, make a recommendation to the trustees.
So the hope then is to get a clean copy with this and.
No, I don't, uh, we haven't got, that's that's gonna be part of the motion when we get to that point. If we get there tonight, which I'm hoping that we.
Oh, we're doing both together. Got it. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
That's right. So the motion will address.
Both together.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
I thought we had to do them separately since.
No, uh, I verified that legally we don't.
Yes.
We can have, treat them as though this is one application.
Okay.
We did the hearings on the same day.
Okay.
Okay, moving forward, um, now coming back, I guess maybe the simplest way to do it. Will be to start through the process of um. Dealing with Article thirty four. And start at the beginning. And then work our way through it.
Yes, and later on in the article, there are actually very few. Changes to make.
Yeah. Okay, so Article thirty, I know that uh, we have some members of the public here that want to. Speak to um, Article thirty four, so we wanna make sure that uh, that we give them the opportunity for that.
Yes. Uh, so we'll use the same uh, procedure. We'll take um, the suggested. Uh, the recommended changes for consideration from Delaware County Regional Planning. Um, and then a few other uh, relatively minor. Um, changes in wording. So if we start. Um, regional planning, number one, uh, they found a typo mixed used. Instead of mixed use and we had already fixed that. So number one is done. Um. It's done in in draft number two. Um. It, number two, um, they say the definition of certain words is referenced but not included. In the information received. Um, staff recommends adding those words to the main definition section of the resolution. Uh, rather than within the overlay section as some amendments have done. Um, and that's actually what we intend to do, that even though. There's a separate list of definitions that apply to the overlay district. Those will all be incorporated into. Uh, Article four in the zoning resolution, which is the definition of terms.
So we will have to have a hearing on changes to Article four.
I'm gonna do that as we, this Article four, Article, the definitions were was part of the advertised. Advertisement for this hearing. That we don't need a separate. Hearing on that.
These, if if those these article, these definitions rather are part of this. Article by reference, they they've been identified. Um, and there are highlight, there's hot links for the words when you do it online. Um. So I think.
To end up changing Article four. Then don't we need by putting all those into Article four? Don't we need a hearing on Article four?
In my, in my opinion, we we're dealing with those definitions. The only definitions that we're changing are the ones that are. Special or not special that that we they're referred to in the overlay districts, Article, essentially Article thirty four. Um, so I don't need, I don't see a need to then go back to Article four and say, oh. The changes we made, we've already talked about, we've already taken through the hearing process. Why do it again? But.
Well, um.
I think we can, maybe we can get to that decision.
When we. Let's go ahead and and get through Article uh, thirty four here. And then we can come back to that as an item as as we go through the definitions, if there's changes that need to be made there. But I think with the, when it comes to the definitions, that potentially what we're saying is that these definitions. Would be considered to be added. To uh, what already exists, we would approve them. Um, and then they would be added to the existing Article four. Um, they are. And then if there's additional changes that at some point down the road, we wanna make in Article four. We would come back and schedule a hearing to address those. But I don't know that there's a has to be a hearing specifically on these. These uh, definitions. I think we go ahead and we approve these definitions. Uh, but that's.
Yeah.
We'll come back to that.
Okay.
Right now, let's go ahead and get through the rest of the concerns here with Article thirty four.
And then um, under the. Mixed use overlay district title, uh, in blue, it says all defined words are shown in blue underline text, you know that. Uh, their definitions can be found in the overlay definitions. It says article, but I don't think article is a good word to use. In this context, I just say in the over left and in the overlay definitions document or just overlay definitions, period.
But is that getting removed once the definitions go into Article four?
Uh, no, because and I talked to Holly about it. She said the hot links will still exist in this article. Is that, that's correct. Molly.
Well, I was not part of that that conversation, but if. That's what Holly said. I'm sure that's what.
Yeah, so I I asked you.
The second sentence should come out of there and it should read that the definitions can be found in Article four.
Is Holly saying that you would have the art? So the definitions would be included in Article four, but they would also be in a document that the hot links would go to.
No, no, the the document that we have is kind of a um, a red line document. It says, we're not looking at the entire Article four. We're just looking at these definitions, which are in this document. These are the definitions that apply to the overlay districts. Uh, once we're okay with them. They just get incorporated into the definition section, but we've already agreed that these definitions are are fine. As part of the discussion of the overlay district that they apply to.
But if you hit the hot link, it would take you to this document.
No, it'll take you to, I assume.
Article four.
I I don't know how it would work.
I would think that this wording should be different than. I should say Article four.
Why do we even need that?
I, yeah, I would think maybe we could just take it out.
And and should we take out all the hot links from the section?
I think I think while we're in the. Process of doing it and the public is trying to read what's going on, the hot links are helpful. I think once it's in the zoning resolution. The hot links aren't necessary because they're not something we're providing in any of our other.
Right.
Articles. And so once it's gotten to the point where it's in the zoning resolution. The articles, the definitions are their own article. That's where they are for everything. No hot links required. Look there. You know what order the alphabets in.
I'm I'm okay with that.
I agree.
Yeah, that I agree. I think that's the way to do it.
So then the sentence in blue will will come out. Okay, and all the hot links in the article will also. Come out. So there'll be no blue underline. Okay, okay. Um, in section thirty four oh one. Uh. Where it says are created pursuant to section five nineteen oh twenty one. Space C. You see in the first line under thirty four, thirty four oh one, just take out the space between the number one and and C. I mean, everywhere else, it's it's got no space. Um, and then under A and B, uh, you can move the. The the uh, the start of the paragraph over by one notch. It's a little out of. There's an extra space before provides. And an extra space before creates. Uh, that's it. Um. Page two. Nothing. Page three, uh, this is pretty important and it's something that uh. Uh, Scots people found. Uh, so we're talking about section thirty four oh three, effective MU overlay designation. Um, third paragraph to begin with. Such an application shall be made in accordance with the regulations of. It said this article, but that's not true. According in accordance with the regulations of. It said this article, but that's not true, according, in accordance with the regulations of Article thirty one of the township zoning resolution. Um, and that same change occurs in the next paragraph. The fifth paragraph and the sixth paragraph, so it's four times in that section that we need to change Article. Thirty four to Article thirty one to have the proper reference, and that's something that. Um, Scott's staff found, and we agree to that.
Okay, so where are the other locations for that? I got the third paragraph under thirty four oh three.
Then the fourth paragraph, where it says Article thirty four on the second line of the fourth paragraph.
Uh huh.
Should be Article thirty one. In the fifth paragraph, again, the second line where it says Article thirty four should read Article thirty one. The second line of the fifth paragraph, and then the second line of the sixth paragraph. The same change.
Okay. And I see you've got that space between the oh twenty one C in that fifth paragraph too.
You got that too, Mo?
Hmm.
Got it. Um. Then in section thirty four oh four. Um, I think we need a period after mixed use, A, mixed use buildings period, I don't know where that comes from. Um, and then something that regional planning staff recommended is under thirty four oh four E. Um, where it uh, where it says, uh, the second line. Household consumption and rendering services incidental to the sale of goods. Um, we should remove the comma so that it reads incidental to the scale of sale of goods, including hardware. And auto parts stores, et cetera, et cetera, so we're just removing that comma after the word goods. And on the next to the last line where it reads. Um, or any other like small or medium retail establishment, they changed the word like to similar. Um, so that any other similar small or medium retail establishment. And that's again from regional planning.
The regional planning also had something on thirty four oh four A.
Um. Yes, um.
Mixed use buildings are permitted used.
So their, their, their comment was that mixed use buildings are permitted use, and it's more of a design choice than a use. Um, and Holly came back and said, um, mixed use buildings are actually a use, they're defined. Um, in the uh, uh, in the definition section, and no, they should be, it, it needs to stay the way it is. So. That was the feedback.
Yeah.
Don't, don't change it.
But, but. Mixed use buildings can only include the uses that are.
Defined.
Defined, right?
Yes, yes, yeah, so it's not, it's not a design choice, it's got a defined dwelling use. Or not a dwelling, but it's defined use.
Sure.
Partly as a dwelling and partly as a commercial, commercial use. So that was.
Yeah, the idea of being able to, the mixed use, to me, it is a use, because. It includes retail uh, and residential.
Correct, correct, correct.
So I think, I think it needs to stay the way it is.
Don't flip over yet, then. Delaware County Regional Planning has a suggestion for D and another one for E on this next page.
Uh, on uh, nursing homes, sorry, yeah, nursing homes, independent senior living facilities. And assisted living facilities, uh, there should be a period at the end of that, but also. Uh, their comment was staff wonders whether any density or room count should be included in the nursing home facility. Uh, category, um, and Holly's reply, no, it's, it's as defined, um, in mixed use A or mixed use B. Um, so again, it's, it's uh, the use is defined, um, and it's not an open ended. Um, an open ended use.
The same thing with tree stands, that's also on this page before we flip over.
Uh, tree stands, is that on this page or the next page?
E, it should be on this page.
Well, I, I thought the, the regional planning staff's comment about the, the nursing home stuff. Um. Was somehow to, to include the word managed in there with the facilities rather than.
Or thirty seven.
Um.
Ensure this category is limited to managed facilities.
Uh, and again, I think that's.
It's thirty four oh four D.
It doesn't, I don't see anything.
Nothing about nursing homes or. What does it say? In, uh, senior living facilities, assisted living?
As a permitted use. And what Joni's commenting on is that ensure this category is limited to managed facilities. Is the comment.
Um. Nursing homes. Any, any idea? All right, I have, I have. Otherwise, ensure this category is limited to managed facilities, and it already says facilities. Um.
I'm not familiar, familiar enough with any of these facilities to know. What qualifies as managed.
I, I.
But it may be something that we have to.
They.
Ask regional planning what they meant. Do they have definitions specifically for managed facilities?
Yeah, nothing there in D is. Defined at all.
The word managed facilities, maybe like.
And C.
We don't have that as part of our definition.
Yeah.
As defined, she says defined in mixed use A or B. Thirty four oh four E. Assistant with the above listed uses. Um. I, I don't, I want to get hung up on this, but could you reach, try to reach her or text her and ask her for her comment on. Um. Density or room count. In assisted living facilities or nursing. So.
Question is what a managed facility is?
Well, uh, I guess the question.
How about?
The questions.
If, if the word managed is, is, is critical, why don't we just start D with the word managed?
Um, I'm not sure what that, that, that's.
Yeah, so basically, we don't know what, what Delaware County Regional Planning is meaning by a managed. Facility as opposed to.
I think, yeah, but I think the real question, staff wonders whether any density or room count should be included in this category. Whether the density or room count, uh, in the nursing home facility. Uh, so maybe nursing homes should be nursing home facilities, uh, maybe that's what they're getting at.
I mean, other, otherwise, I mean, I assume the word otherwise there means that if you're not including any density or room counts. Then there has to be some kind of limit to. To that category.
So otherwise, this category, ensure this category is limited to managed facilities, so I guess. Nursing home facilities rather than nursing homes. Uh, because it's nursing home facilities, comma, independent senior living facilities, comma. And assistant, assisted living facilities, period, so each one is qualified as a facility.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm okay with adding the word facility, facilities. You okay there?
Mm-hmm.
They're all, and all of these would be regulated by state um, regulations.
Right, besides everything else.
Yeah, when, when you uh, think in terms of a nursing home facility. If you leave out the word facility on it, maybe nursing home could be.
An independent nursing home, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good, okay. Um, so that was thirty four oh four D, the next one, we're on to thirty four oh seven. E, so before we, uh, so we were on page three, uh, I've got nothing on page four, nothing on page five. Nothing, uh, page six, um, there is one. Um. So on, on page six, where we have section thirty four oh seven. E. Uh, regional planning commented preserving tree stands is definitely a desired goal, but staff is unsure. They should be excluded as part of net density calculation, these would be difficult to define, and Holly's response was. Um, as determined by the zoning commission is how it's defined. Um, so she basically left.
That was the language that was added, yeah.
Well, I think that's, that was the text that was there, significant tree stands as determined by the zoning commission. And she said, so the text that is there without any changes, uh, is the definition of. Um, of the acreage or the density, um, I'm sorry, the acreage of a, of a, of a tree stand is what we say it is.
That would be identified in uh, upfront as part of that conceptual plan.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but if it's up to our discretion, that could get us into some potential lawsuit if we say somebody's tree stand is smaller than somebody else's tree's dimension.
You've got a boundary on a tree stand, the, the surveyor says it's so many acres, it's, it's so many acres. And if the developer wants to argue it or knock it down, I don't know.
We're talking about like hunting tree stands? Like what we're talking about?
Talking about.
Oh, okay.
Stands of trees.
Stands of trees.
Okay, thank you for having me so much.
Yeah, a little, a forest of different sizes, a tree stand.
You're gonna have your microbeet and your tree stand, go tree hunting after a few years.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Gonna Google that.
The, the zoning commission is making the determination of whether or not it's a significant one or not.
And, and, and the size of it, because really it's the size.
Yeah, it's the size. The size of the acreage wise and the trees.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The age of the trees makes a big difference.
Um, in section thirty four oh seven H. Uh, where it said, uh, standards for any private roads shall be approved, uh, the. Suggested we change that to private drives instead of private roads, you know, Holly was okay with that. Thirty four oh seven J. Um. Um, they.
It's called.
Staff recommends using the word may or should to allow for flexibility, uh, in meandering through a development. They didn't like the word meander, um, and Holly's response was, no, shall. Be constructed as to meander through the development, um, so that one we.
Well, this is one that, um, we may want to go to bat on in terms of, um, getting the. Delaware County Engineers Office to uh, make some changes in what their expectations are.
For a non-suburban development.
For, yeah, for a non-suburban development, because right now, they're forcing us to do some things that we don't want to do.
Yeah.
Uh, if we leave it in, then that will bring about a discussion at the, at the county level.
Yes. Yes.
And that, I think that's important, I would want to keep it in the way that it is.
And I, I think we're, yeah.
I think we all would prefer that.
Yeah, all right.
And the only, the only other change uh, in that J section is, is. Come back to my suggestion that we take out, uh, the word asphalt from walking path, and it gives us the flexibility to. Have asphalt or crushed limestone or some other.
And we'll get even more pushback from the county, but I think that's, I think it's worth it, but.
And I'm actually attending a webinar in a few days on, um, privately owned. Walking paths and how to design them, and, and so I don't know what's going to come out of that, but. At, at least in this case, I would remove the word asphalt if there's agreement, and we can move on from there, if not. Leaving it, but.
Fine by me.
Take it out?
Take it out, everyone agree? We're all in agreement, we're taking it out, the word asphalt.
More asphalt just makes for more runoff.
Yep, um, and then moving on to page seven, uh, under L. Uh, where it says all other local roads, uh, thirty feet from center line. Uh, we're adding all other local roads, and we're adding words and private drives. Uh, to accommodate the other change in, from private roads to private drives. And that. Okay, and then on page eight. Um, under the top part or whatever columns. Um, the, the text reads the following types of undesirable trees and shrubs shall be prohibited as well as any other invasive or. Undesriable species, so I think we have to re spell these rivals.
Hmm.
Um. And so that, with that, we've pretty much come to the end of where we got last time. Uh, so moving on from there, um, item number ten in the regional planning list said. Uh, graphics don't always appear with their related text, which may just be a result of printed copy. Uh, that the RPC reviewed, um, so they wanted to put all of the. Uh, graphics in a pattern book section, uh, at the end of this section with references provided within the text. And we said, no, we like it the way it is, we like the, the graphics embedded in the text. And I think, I think we can do that well so that, uh, it lines up with where they need to be.
Yes.
Yeah, there may be, need to be a few spacing changes.
Yeah, but.
It'd make sense to put like something under the photo, as like a reference of what it belongs to you, like what number it belongs to.
Yeah, that's a lot of work, I don't know, well, you got some credits.
I mean, I don't, I don't feel terribly strong, just throwing that out there.
I, I'm fine with it the way it is.
Yeah, it, it would be nice to have a caption, but. I want to know that those are, are harder to do.
I would prefer to leave it the way that it is.
Good. Um, page nine, nothing, uh, page ten, nothing. Uh, page.
I had, hang on, I have a question about ten.
Yes.
Uh, so.
Ten, did you, are you on page ten?
Yes. Building materials, all exterior elevations shall be comprised of eighty percent wood, fiber cement, board, and button, brick, or native cultured stone. Then about halfway through that same paragraph, this is two I. Brick, stone, or other natural materials may be utilized as an accent material.
Where, where, where do you go?
Sorry, 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 in the same, same paragraph about halfway through where brick and stone are then a hot link again.
And other natural materials.
Yes, may be utilized as an accent material, provided that it does not exceed twenty percent of the gross exterior. So why are we going from you can have a brick building to if you're gonna use it as an accent, it can only be twenty percent, that, it just seems. Kind of intuitive.
It captured and, and that. Yeah, it does seem odd.
Eighty percent. Exterior. Jim, you reading this?
Yeah, what about it?
I just wondered what your expert opinion on this would be.
Repeat it please, I was.
Uh, we're, we're on, I don't know, do you have the?
Page, page ten, two. I, so building material, you can use wood, fiber cement, board, and button, brick, or other cultured stone. And then halfway through that same paragraph, brick and stone are hot linked again. Uh, or other natural materials may be utilized as an accent material, provided it does not exceed twenty percent. So you can have an entirely brick building. Or a building with brick as an accent.
Maybe they're just talking about the foundations.
Foundation.
So all exterior elevations cap shall be comprised of eighty percent. Cultured native material, whatever. Foundations must be clad in the same natural material utilized in the building to blend with the overall structure. Exposed cement block or split face block foundations shall be prohibited. Brickstones and other natural materials may be utilized and it as an accent material. Provided does not exceed twenty percent of the gross exterior building wall square footage.
So you're not allowed to have an entirely stone foundation?
No, there's no, you're right. The the foundation, I think the meaning of this. Uh, without playing word games is that all foundations have to be brick or stone. Period. So you 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 know how your block or your board wall would stick up above the ground.
I don't see that at all.
They want that covered.
That does not appear how this is worded to me.
At all.
So maybe.
It it doesn't, it it says foundation must be clad with the same natural material utilized on the building.
Well, you're not gonna put, you're not gonna put wood on your foundation.
Okay, but.
I don't, I'm not saying that we're all not in agreement of what we actually want. I just think it's worded not how we want.
I understand you, the the wording. I'm just explaining what the general meaning is and then you can figure the wording out.
Okay.
Hmm. I take out that sentence, that's confusing.
Trying to figure out what, how can we, how, what, do you have a suggestion as to how to fix it, Virginia?
Well, I think I think Molly has a suggestion.
Oh, Molly, sorry, didn't hear.
They say all exterior elevations shall be compromised of these items, as it says. Foundations must be clad with the same natural materials such as brick or stone utilized on the buildings blend with the overall architecture. And then I can take out that sentence now. Brickstone or other natural materials may be utilized as an accent material, because that is a little, yeah, it's a little confusing. I can see that.
So all all the way through to the gross exterior building square wall footage, that that whole sentence.
Yes, that whole sentence would go out. And then I would bring that brick and stone back into that sentence that's talking about foundations. To make that a little more clear for the reader.
I like that suggestion.
All right, let.
So read it to me again.
Let's do this again, exactly where I was.
Right from the beginning, it says, all exterior elevations shall be comprised of eighty percent wood, fiber cement, board, and button, brick, or native or cultured stone. Foundations must be clad with the same natural materials such as brick or stone utilized on the building to blend with the overall architecture of the structure. Exposed cement block or split split face block foundations shall be prohibited. Vinyl and or aluminum shall be prohibited except when used for trim details.
So you're deleting that sentence.
Mm hmm.
That whole sentence, brickstone or other natural materials, that's deleted.
So I I still, I sort of don't like the foundations must be clad with the same natural material utilized such as brick or stone utilized on the building to blend, because. I agree, you're not going to be putting wood on your foundation. So I think. I I don't know that we need the same as the building part in there.
Foundations need to be masonry. In other words, the brick or stone.
Yeah.
When you get down to ground level, that's.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think having it say the same as the building is confusing, because most foundations are not the same as the building on top of.
Well, the things if you use stone above ground on the. On above.
Yeah.
It has to be the same stone used as a veneer on the foundation walls.
Same natural material.
So it's either gotta be brick or stone on the foundation, concrete walls, matching whatever had been used above that level. That's what it's saying.
That that's that's how I take it too.
I think that's.
The same natural material you're adding such as brick or stone utilized on the building. To blend with the overall overall architecture of the structure. Um, and then we're saying exposed cement block is prohibited, vinyl or aluminum is prohibited, uh, except for certain. I.
To me, that just excludes something like my own house with a stone foundation within water table and brick above, which I think looks. Rather rural.
Doesn't exclude that.
If it's saying the same.
But I mean.
Stone on the concrete on the foundation and brick above, if those were your accent point. But if you had stone above, it's gotta be the same stone on the foundation is all it's saying. Whatever class of materials you're using. Needs to be consistent. That's what it's saying.
So your foundation is stone.
Yes.
And above is wood.
On the one side, on the other side, it's brick.
Um.
We, um, we have to say this, is the the issue the same? Should we just say with a natural material?
Well, except that we do want it to be consistent. If you've got.
Yeah.
Brick on 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 the elevation, you want to have the same brick on the foundation and not mix of mix.
So unless you have a corresponding.
Yes, so I do get some of that. The thing I don't want to do is. Pigeonhole us into such specific design standards that all of a sudden we live in New Albany and everything is a brick building with a picket fence and a brick building with a picket fence like that's.
Oh, if we.
I want to leave.
If we just.
I know, but I'm I'm wanting to clarify that we're leaving room for for some variation.
Okay, so what if we take out the natural materials thing, go with foundations must be clad with the same brick or stone utilized on the building? To blend with the overall architecture of the structure.
Yeah, that's fine. That's what we're trying.
Uh, that's just where I was going. Thank you, Joni, that. We're saying that the foundation has to be clad with brick or stone.
Yeah.
Because we're not gonna put wood on there.
Yeah.
We're not, and we've already prohibited vinyl and other kinds of things. So what's left besides brick and stone?
Okay.
So take out natural material and just put in a brick or stone instead.
I'm okay with that.
Yep.
I I did have a a question. We kind of glossed over page eight pretty quickly.
Oh, let let's make sure that while you you captured all of that.
This should say foundations must be clad with brick or stone.
Same brick or stone.
With the same.
It's not a brick or stone building.
No, but but. Must be clad with 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 the same brick or stone utilized on. The building. So if there's no brick or stone on the on the on the elevation, you don't.
And it doesn't.
It's not, you still have to use brick or stone, but there's no.
You don't have to match it to the brick that's.
That doesn't exist.
So same brick or stone utilized on the building to blend. Okay. Gotcha.
Johnny, you're going back?
Yeah, I just had a a quick question about um. Um. Driveway setbacks from side lot lines.
Where is that?
Page eight or nine, nine, whichever one was the page before. Yeah, page nine. I I guess I'm just getting a little confused about the, so your setback from from a side lot line is is just two feet. But I'm I'm not sure how this can, this twenty four feet of paved apron. Works with side load load garages. I I just, I don't have a picture of that in my head. And I I didn't find a picture of that. Here either.
So we're on.
So two feet is really, really small.
It it's, yes.
You've got this, this twenty four feet of paved apron.
We know driveway setback for side lot lines, two feet.
And then page ten, three asterisks, side load garage.
Yeah, yeah, to go to the asterisk part.
So is that is that two feet plus twenty four feet?
Exclusive of the two foot. Side.
So twenty twenty four feet doesn't include the two foot side.
It's actually.
It's in addition to the sideline line.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, that's.
What if you want to take, you want to make, you want to have that say in addition to instead of exclusive of?
Well, that. That might have have gone through a little faster in my mind. Rather than.
Which paragraph are you suggesting that you want to look at changing? Is it um? Um.
The one with the.
Grab two is page ten. Is that the one you're looking at changing?
Yeah, for the side load garage.
Side load garage.
I was having difficulty picturing that. But using in addition to rather than exclusive might. In my mind, makes it easier.
They'll provide at least twenty four feet of paved apron, cross out exclusive and insert in addition.
In addition to the two.
In addition to the two feet, okay. That's the only change.
Definitely.
All right. And we were on page ten, Tom, ready to go forward?
So.
More?
One little thing. So I know that once we have this set, we we can't. Be nitpicky. We either say, yeah, it fits, no, it doesn't. So I know that we don't want to necessarily open up lots of things. But it seems that we're being a little specific about building colors.
Oh, we are being very specific about the things and.
I just, I'm I'm trying to uh help avoid the uniform look.
Okay.
And so to. To get that specific would not be my preference. If I'm the only one that feels that way, we'll move on, but.
What would you change it to?
I I'm not sure I I really. Feel that we need to limit building colors at all. I mean, if in in this case, I mean, you'd never get those those wonderful Victorian painted ladies. That are in all the, you know, old cities. Um, they'd all had to be boring colors like tan and gray.
Yeah, I just think.
This is for the commercial buildings.
Yeah.
This isn't for how.
This is, yes.
This is for all the buildings.
In the district.
Yeah, in a commercial.
Yeah, but in this, in this uh multi-use district, yes.
And that's why I'm hesitant to open it up to everything, because again, we can't be nitpicky about it once it's there, but. Barn red. But no, like maroons that. I don't know, it seems it seems odd that we're being so specific about barn red. And so specific about gray sky blues. And leaf greens, but like, I don't know, aren't those all also earth tones? Sky blue, leaf green, those are.
Let's see.
Well, I'm happy.
Well, sage is literally a leaf.
Yeah. Frankly, yeah, I I I'm happy with the way that it's worded. I don't want to see us spending time trying to debate colors and changing this. I think it's fine the way it is.
Like I said, if nobody else feels that way, then we can move on.
And if that's the only divergence from on a development plan.
Yeah, if somebody wants to do a divergence, that we would be permitted to change.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
It's not density, right?
On page ten here. Um, yeah, I'm I'm not. Not sure. Studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. And by the way, those don't seem to be commercial buildings to me, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's it's. It's it's the the.
But anyhow, the I'm not sure those are are actually dwelling types. Um, earlier, we didn't recall dwelling types, uh, like single family, multifamily and stuff like that. You know, we referred to as dwelling types earlier.
Well, N in the underneath the asterisks is minimum dwelling unit floor area. Would say dwelling unit.
In the definition, it simply has dwelling, common wall, multifamily, or three family. There is no dwelling on its own or dwelling type.
Yeah, that'd be like dwelling unit size then. Uh, the the, I don't, but since we do define dwellings as. Single or doubles and multis and stuff, it it seemed to me that calling this column dwelling type wasn't accurate.
Should it just say dwelling or should it say dwelling unit? I don't think it makes any difference.
Bedroom, since since that's what you've got there.
But but you've got a studio, which is just one room. It's not, it, there's not a designated bedroom there. It's one unit.
Oh, yeah.
Oh. So. If we change the word type to, I mean, it made sense to me what type was, but if you want it. We can change it to unit dwelling unit. Or just the word dwelling.
Or dwelling unit type.
I don't know. It just didn't seem to fit with the list of definitions that we had.
Yeah, but I think going by the paragraph that's above it. If we simply call the head of that, the 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 column titled dwelling units.
Yes, since we have minimum dwelling unit floor area.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's what stated in N, correct?
Yep.
All right, change the word type to unit.
Or units, I I mean, because they're different, one, two, three bedroom and a studio. Dwelling unit, whatever, I don't really want to fight.
Not gonna fight over the S.
Or if 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 you want to keep it the way that it was, you can say type of dwelling unit. What are we doing, guys? Come on, let's get this.
Dwelling unit.
Dwelling unit. Everybody's agreed upon dwelling unit, all right.
Type of dwelling. I mean, I like this, no, well.
Too late. I already said.
All right, page eleven. Can we bring on to page eleven?
Page eleven.
Um, under D roofing. Um, I added the type after hip, gable, gambrel, barrel, I added or mansard. So that you can get kind of a rectangular um hanger type for a.
You add, you added mansard?
No, I added barrel.
Oh, okay.
No, it already had mansard.
Okay.
And it already had hip.
Yeah.
But it didn't have barrel.
What do you want, Bert?
Because I think an ice skating rink, a rectangular ice skating rink will probably have a barrel that's.
Okay.
That's the way you get your span without internal support.
Yeah, but if if we're going for the rural. Look, do you feel like we should be trying to mask?
Over the township.
Mask the ice skating rink a little?
Yeah. I, well, okay, I'm I'm not gonna fight it, but I added, I just so it's. Just so you know, I added.
I'm worried about other structures, not your ice.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't love the barrel roof. I don't think it really.
It's.
It's not the rule of luck we're looking for.
I don't think so, but again, everybody's definition of rules.
I'm just.
It's a rule for me.
All right.
Yeah.
Take it out?
Let's take it out.
Out, out it goes.
Out of the definitions too.
Um, and then you'll have to, I think there was a an illustration for it.
There was.
There was?
Like a very in very commercial looking.
Um. Page twelve, nothing. Page thirteen, nothing. Fourteen, nothing, fifteen, um.
Whoa, whoa, hold on. Page twelve. I had something.
Page twelve.
Under lighting. E one B. Um, we say streetlights shall be exempt from regulations of this section. Why are we exempting streetlights?
No, 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 what this is.
Chief. B root O.
P one.
P and then one.
P one D is in David.
Oh. Streetlights shall be exempt from the regulations of this section.
I just, I'm concerned about exempting streetlights from our regulations, because don't we want to keep light pollution down?
Yes.
And then if we have like these like blazing streetlights, that doesn't really accomplish that.
Um. I don't know, are those?
Do we as a township have a say over streetlights if streetlights get put in?
I don't know.
I don't know what the legal requirements are with regarding this.
We have.
Street lighting, that becomes a county issue for sure.
Yeah, I imagine that's something that like ODOT deals with and we don't get a say.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be ODOT, it'd be the county.
Municipalities, you have AEP.
Yeah, in terms of what might be minimally required legally.
Yeah.
In order, and it, what we have down here may not. Meet those legal requirements. I don't know. That could be why it's worded the way that it is in terms of exempting them.
Lighting bound on the parcel. As is different from on the street. Right?
Right. Yeah.
So.
And if it's a county, well, it depends upon whether it's gonna be a township street or county road.
Why it says containing to street. Why it says containing two streets, maybe you don't even need the.
Probably don't.
Cause this, this is, number one is exemptions. Um.
We don't have to, maybe we could just cross it out, not worry about the lights.
Lighting shall comply with these standards or less specifically exempted and then the exemptions are. They do.
Of course, though, the lighting plan that the developer might be bringing in, he may indeed have streetlights.
Um. But if we, if we strike it, then it's not exempted from these standards. Uh, and are we saying, do we talk about street lighting anywhere else?
No.
The closest is in number eight, I think.
Closest would be number eight.
Oh, non-essential.
Closest to being a streetlight would be four A. And the diagrams, so then we have to put a limit on how high they can be.
Yep. I'm, I'm okay if you want to take out, um, P one D.
It'd be the easiest thing. I don't know, me.
Out she goes.
All right, we'll just take it out.
Um, twelve, okay, thirteen, okay. Fourteen, okay.
We're going too fast for you to flip pages.
Try to rush through.
Uh, in, in the, um, uh, in the boxed in section. Uh, where it says buffer required on the right-hand side, we need a column heading on the left-hand side. And we inserted. Condition, the word condition. So. L. Hmm, maybe.
Is the plan that we're staying a little late tonight, or do we want to move to get some public comment?
I'd like to.
We're gonna try to keep moving and get.
I, I agree, but.
Yeah, no, we definitely, we definitely have to have public.
There's, there's some, some. Some typos on page fourteen. Number seven. The last word should be points, period.
Typer, page fourteen.
Got you.
Okay, number eight, the second line, I believe you meant shall be screened, not screed.
Look it up.
Oh, there.
Good. Um.
Let's give it five more minutes. I think I'm listening to Virginia's suggestion and then we'll take. A break, uh, to allow for some public input because the, the public. Is may have input that is re- relevant to. If there's anything that they have that's relevant beyond page, wherever we are, that's fine, or they can make their comments relevant to the pages that we've already covered.
Yes, okay, so are we okay adding the word condition? In that text block?
Yes.
Fifteen, sixteen, nothing, seventeen, nothing, eighteen.
Hold on. That went too fast for me.
I'm not sure what page you're on, Tom, at this point either, so catch us up.
Well, I was on fifteen.
Fifteen. And which item?
Right here.
You're just adding up here, condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's where I thought you were, all right. But it's not in our copy, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a change. All right, page sixteen now.
Seven.
Everybody on sixteen?
Yep.
All right, good.
Seventeen, nothing. Eighteen.
That's one with the signs.
Yeah, eighteen, I, again, think we're too specific on colors, but you've all said on record that you're willing to allow divergence for that, so.
Nineteen.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Right, she's. Did you have something on eighteen?
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that, uh. So, so none of the signs. Um, can't have like neon signs on any of these commercial buildings? Is that correct?
All right, they show adhere to the rural design theme, using natural colors, et cetera. Now you go ahead and work your way through nineteen. I mean, there, there are different types of signs in it, each one's being addressed.
Well, I was just, just making sure, I mean.
But there's no neon permitted.
All right. It seems to be a. A popular commercial kind of thing.
Not even neon, though. What about signs like the one we have out front?
Fire station here.
Are you allowing those?
What, what do they call those things?
Well. So those are not allowed in this overlay district then as well, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Correct, okay, good.
They'd not be allowed in the subdivisions.
That's what we.
So once we put the township in there, they're have to get rid of that sign.
All right, um, moving on to page twenty, if I can, um, C, where it says ground mounted. Sign should have. An extra S.
What page are you on, Tom?
Twenty. Nine, twenty, yeah.
B.
Say that again, please, someone missed it.
Second, uh, so page twenty. Uh, sub. Subsection C, ground mounted signs. In this. At the head, as a heading.
Okay.
Oh, got you.
Um. Twenty-one. Twenty-two. On page twenty-three, under F, window signs, again, I think we need a. Um, column header, which should probably say window signs.
Okay.
And on page twenty-four. This page intentionally left blank. Uh, I'm always.
To say that it's intentionally left blank.
Hmm, so I think, uh, we've covered all of the items. Um. On this.
On this summary sheet, right?
With a few changes that, that Johnny's found that will have to be added. Um, so the only other thing that I want to bring up is in Delaware County Regional Planning, item number eleven. Uh, where they talk about the two hundred foot woodland buffer. Um, and I think there was a. Um, the difference between the two hundred foot setback from the new collective roads and thirty foot setback from the new local roads is extreme. I think they misunderstood that it's, uh. We're talking about a setback from the right of way and it's only. Seventy-five feet on state highway. Versus thirty feet on a very local road, so it's not two hundred, it's a two hundred foot setback from any right of. Uh, again, we just. Considered it and didn't make any adjustment. Um, and then on item thirteen. Uh, staff continues to believe area B. Would be more effective in, if it extended into a portion of the undeveloped land north of Fancher. We considered that and. For the same reason. Uh, that we had given. Said no. So it was considered.
Yeah, the consideration being.
We're, we.
We, we, we heard you and now we were making a decision to leave it the way that it is.
Exactly.
That's the recommendation coming from Holly.
Exactly. Exactly.
And I know that's a recommendation coming from each planning committee, all right?
And those of us to the north.
Um, in fact, many, many other people to the north.
Okay, uh, well, we'll. Open up at this point for public comment and then we'll come back.
Thank you.
So it's now open for public comment. Uh, I'm sorry that we don't have audio for the folks that are watching us or participating on Zoom, but. Uh, well, we're, doesn't look like we have much out there. Uh, at this point, but, uh, we're now open to public comment, so members of the public who are here, yes, sir.
I wanted to ask about, uh, changing the.
Okay, well, first, would you state your name and your address, please?
Matt Bryant, one one six zero two Fancher Road.
Very good, thank you, thank you, Matt.
I wanted to ask if you're willing to consider changing it, uh, from its current, I think it's A, that the eight. We all units an acre to B, uh, twelve units an acre for that property.
So you're talking about changing the ba- one of these boundaries?
Correct.
Correct?
I don't think anyone's on Zoom to hear or know what you're talking about for the recording.
It's picking up.
Okay.
I'm watching.
Oh, okay.
Effectively, it's the only property that has its complete western boundary and southern boundary. Um, you know, touching twelve units an acre. Excluding the black part of the lot. If you add that, it's like fifty units an acre up there at the cemetery.
Yeah. Um.
So you're wanting to move the boundary line. Uh, for mixed use district A, what, that divides between B, A and B, you want that to be moved. To the east, to the west?
Can I?
East. About halfway to the east, yeah.
This, where that blue chunk comes up. I guess it's like green on that one.
It's kind of hard to see on this map.
It's hard, it's harder to see.
And I don't think I have a better map of it, I, I didn't bring. So, uh, may, maybe, um. Maybe you can bring up the, the auditor's website and the GIS map, so we can actually see it. Um. Molly, do you have, can you do that for me?
I was gonna say your screen sharing, so we'll let you do this.
Uh, Matt, do you know the parcel item for that? Uh. We'll search, we'll search it on your name.
They could do, yeah, I was. Search under his name.
Yeah.
Matt, your last name is spelled B R Y A N T.
Yeah, but it's under Bandit Properties.
Yeah.
It's under.
Bandit.
It just made sense to me, I guess, to make a straight line with the twelve units an acre, the, I'm literally, it goes completely around it. It's the only one with the complete southern and western border.
Yes, um, but if we. Change your. The, the district that, that that property was, was in, which I think is a, a U-shaped property with two accesses from Fancher Road. Uh, that would mean we'd probably have to change Evelyn Schmidt's property too, because that's embedded in, in, in yours. Um, and then. The zoning, uh, the strategic planning committee felt that that was a slippery slope. That we were reluctant to go down because we had. All of the maps that we showed during the community meetings.
Yeah.
Was this way. Uh, it was what we presented to the community, we got their consent. Essentially assented to. Um, and I think as a strategic planning committee, I don't have. I mean, others can speak to it, but I think there was reluctance to make any changes to the boundaries that we had sent to the zoning commission. Um, yeah, that's, yeah, that's good, so. Uh, the way I understand it, two of your properties, one in the name of Bandit and one in the name of Bryant. Are in the mixed use B district already.
Kind of help.
Okay.
Going to help. Matt, we looked into this for you.
Yeah.
I'm with the Strategic Planning Committee, I'm Jim Steele Smith. So what we had was. That we were going to cemeteries right here. Uh, we originally, um, we're gonna cut it off here. We had already come up with the density. And the protections and the type of thing we were using in the zoning of this.
Yeah.
But this parcel right here, Russ Miller's property, we would have ended up cutting. The zoning right through his property.
Is that allowable?
Huh?
Is that allowable?
I don't believe so, so our, uh, Holly, our planner, certified planner. Uh, said we need to move this over here, so this is Russ Miller's property. All right, that's why you weren't added. You would have been normally, we would have been, because we're using the cemetery as a geographical line, so to speak, once we hit. Our, our totals of what we were looking for. So it wasn't anybody picking on anybody, if Russ Miller's property had ended over here, that's where it was stopped. In my original notes, I went back and looked at my original map. And I had actually drawn the line through Russ Miller's property and Holly caught it. And, uh, said you can't do that. Because we had already picked up the amount of density. That we wanted, uh, we already matched Columbus. And the different protections. Uh, that we were trying to do. So it wasn't that we were on purposely leaving somebody out and going willy-nilly. Uh, the reason is that because of Russ Miller's property. That, or not just, it's just because it's Russ, but because of his property.
Because of the way it was shaped.
Yeah, just because the way it's shaped, uh, also in looking into it. I don't know what you want to do with your property, but you do understand you have to have twenty-five acres.
I do.
For the overlay.
Right.
Okay, uh, and basically everything's the same, except the eight units per acre versus twelve. So you understand that.
I do.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just making sure that you understand where we're coming from, why you're addressing. Uh, the, the committee and our thoughts of why we did this.
Yeah.
So do you have any questions for me before you go back to them as to why we did this?
When you say match Columbus's numbers, are you talking about the amount that the sewer can hold?
Uh, no, we're matching, uh, their zoning.
What?
Their density zoning, so what happens there? Uh, where we back up to the, their park?
Yeah.
That parkland, uh, Columbus has their ma- major suburban. Density for apartments is twelve units to the acre. So between what we have with the trailer park. And what we have on the other side. Uh, we were lining up with that.
So the. The, uh, point to me on this map now, just so that I make sure I know where the divider line is for A and B. Where is the divider line right now?
It, what it does, it comes out like this, that's what he's saying, we've left his off, then it comes down.
Yeah, so that's okay.
Where does it go up?
And it doesn't, it goes up.
Well, it goes right here.
Yeah.
Is, is, is. This, and then it cuts back and then goes up.
Well, I.
Yeah, but where, where is it going up?
Right here, doesn't it go up right here?
Yes, and then it jogs back over to that, so it's just. The line goes here.
Right, it cat- it catches his property, so the only thing is that really got, uh, is just this little piece. Because we didn't want to divide Russ Miller's. This parcel, we didn't want to divide this parcel.
Yeah, but so the idea was to avoid splitting that particular, that parcel.
Right, and we have other residents. That we did the same thing. And then if we start. Including, not picking on you, you're talking about overall, we start including it, we have some people over on Green Cook that'll jump all over us. Uh, because we didn't include them. Uh, and there's been comments on that.
Okay, but. So the difference between A and B is.
Eight.
Eight versus, it's eight versus twelve, right? Or. Uh, residential units or dwelling units.
Right.
Commercial is the same.
Right.
Okay. So the only difference is the dwelling units, the number of dwelling units.
And you can still apply for the zoning. Or zoning, actual zoning, so if, for instance, um, through experience. So if this area starts to fill up. With multi-use units. All right, and they're all sudden backing up to you. And you say, hey. You've got this here and you come and apply with zoning. And they're gonna see all this development around here, chances are, they're not gonna say. Well, you don't belong, obviously you belong now, so you always have that opportunity. To rezone.
Well, that, I was told it'd have to be a divergence.
No, if you're in the overlay, not the zoning.
You would pull down the cloud, you would just apply.
You would just apply.
You would just apply, you would just be applying for zoning, Matt, as opposed to, and if you don't have twenty-five acres.
Yeah.
You can't pull down the, the overlay anyway.
But you can with your acreage. But you can with your acreage, once the sewers are in and it's being built, you can with your acreage request zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I ask how many acres you have?
Uh, if you put them all together, it's a little over fifteen.
Yeah, well, fifteen, which is, um, from a planning standpoint, doable.
Yeah. What if I zone those properties together? What would happen to that line?
What, which, which together?
You stitched them together?
My personal one and Bandit Properties.
Well, uh.
Three of them.
So if you join them together, what would happen in the overlay?
Yeah.
Nothing.
It would just split the property.
Well, because it wasn't, it was like that when we zoned it.
Then to touch on your, uh, you mentioned that you'd show this to the public.
Mm-hmm.
Was the Center Village boundary shown to the public too?
Mm-hmm.
And I've heard that those can be changed. In previous meetings, yeah.
Well, we haven't, well, we haven't. Politified Center Village. This is a bit more solidified.
Was it in the quick strategy guide?
Like this?
Both.
Uh, the Center Village districts. That were approved by the trustees.
Yes.
There we go then.
It's been, no, I think, I think we expanded it and did that. I think it's pretty much done.
Those changes after?
No.
I think it was. It had to be.
Well, Matt, did we, have we addressed your, your questions with regard to this? And so far as the, uh, questions that you had.
Yeah.
Uh, I just want to make sure that we've addressed that. The Center Village District is not something that's being considered yet. The, the strategic planning hasn't. Worked on it as yet, so I don't know what's gonna happen with that.
True, and that was part of the reasoning that I was given for this couldn't change. Because it was shown to the public, so were all the other boundaries.
Well, that's.
Already changed.
Well, the point that. I gotta be, I guess, saying, say directly to you that in terms of looking at your property. The overlay district. Is not applicable to you in the sense of you're within it potentially, but you don't have enough acreage to pull the overlay down. But as, as, uh, Mr. Steel Smith has mentioned.
It will have.
The.
I will.
If you put all three parcels together, how many?
Fifteen. There's other parcels involved.
Okay.
Well, even if, even if you attach to Rush Miller. Uh, at this point, once this is done, it won't change, it won't, still won't change. Uh, the parcel that you're talking about.
If you, if you join with some, uh, someone else, then potentially you could. Be, they would pull down the overlay, but where the, uh, lines are drawn in terms of the. A and B, that doesn't change.
That's why I'm asking if we can just change it now because of. I mean, you already said it, yeah, probably gonna join with Russ Miller. And it should be twelve, because I'm the only one with a complete southern. And western boundary.
What about the people underneath Rush Miller?
Hey, the problem. The problem would be if we moved the line now, I can see the problem there. I saw those other parcels down there. They extend in, but then those parcels run out even further east, so that becomes an issue.
But then that becomes an issue. Then we've got people on Green Cook Road. And they're saying, well, you're doing it for him, we do it. The problem is, as you well know, you gotta draw the line somewhere when you have a reason for doing that.
So let's say the line is drawn. Let's say you join with Russ Miller. I don't have an answer for this. Is there an option? For him to come for a divergence?
No.
No, because we're, we don't give divergences for.
For density.
Permitted use density or.
But he could apply for a zoning change under another provision, yes. As a separate matter, instead of pulling down an overlay.
Okay.
But he could apply for, that's what Mr. Steel Smith was trying to identify, that he could apply for. Zoning change that would permit higher, potentially higher density.
Okay.
Now, once it starts developing, you see what's in the area.
Yeah.
You know, as a zoning board, you would look and say, well, this is not weird.
Yeah, I just want to try to make sure, you know, we're not just saying, no, this is the boundary, this is how it is. Like, I understand there are reasons for that, but I think. It's our duty as a public board to say. This is what we can offer you and.
It does a straight line to Banter, does not make sense. Why does it have to jake-jaw back? You use a cemetery. As a reason, the cemetery keeps extending west. I literally have, uh, true commercial zoning, a cemetery. It's surrounded by twelve units an acre. Why is it not twelve? It makes absolutely no, no sense to me. I've heard your calculations. You came up with, uh, nineteen thousand for the sewer population. Or the, the density with your calculations. Hollywood's twenty-three thousand, went at a whole thirty-eight, I believe. So why not add a few more units? And then you use the excuse of, uh, the public's seen it. The public's also seen Center Village, and I've been to multiple meetings and have recordings already that it's been said that they can be moved. That was the same quick strategy guy that was voted by the trustees.
So we could go back to my original drawings and just draw a line through Russ Miller and deal with Russ.
You said it's not allowable, right?
Wait, he didn't.
I'm not expanding, I'm saying.
I've been, I'm just saying it in the negative, but not in the positive.
Okay, I, okay, I, I've explained, uh.
I think, I think that we've got the picture. We have a full explanation. At this point, I want to close the public portion. Of the hearing and then go back to the committee. To the commission for a further discussion on this issue. The issue being. Do you want to change the existing boundary? That we are now, we now have for, uh, A and B in the overlay area. Now, if there's any, if there's anyone who is in favor of it, uh, on the commission, I want you to speak that now. Cause we've already heard from Tom, uh, the opposition. Is there anyone on the commission that will speak to support it?
So I, I see his point. I mean, if you're surrounded by all of these things. It, it seems logical that. It could be allowed for his property as well. I also see Tom's point, and I think. The thing I come down to is. I don't necessarily want to do something that could put the entire overlay district in jeopardy. Because I think we need this protection from Columbus. And so if, if changing the boundary lines causes enough of an uproar to. Potentially stop that, I don't, I don't necessarily want to do that, but I, I see your point and I. I do think that there's some sense in allowing that when it is surrounded by all of these other things.
My concern would be if we were to change it, the other parcels that are. And adjacent to it and immediately south. Those folks could come in and request the same thing for the same reasons that he's using.
And again.
And that's, that then will extend it even further east.
Yeah, it's gonna be, end up all, all the way to Miller Paul at that rate.
That's what I mean, that's what I'm afraid of. And we didn't go to the Strategic Planning Committee, didn't go to Miller Paul in the first place. Had they gone to Miller Paul in the first place. Then we wouldn't be having this discussion with Matt. So I, I don't see a reason to make the change and then open that up for additional. Issues that potentially could.
And like I said, I, I see that side of it too. I.
Yeah.
It's, it's tricky because it's not, you know, not everything is a nice square where it was very easy to say.
It would be nice if it were, I agree.
Yeah.
That we, if we could just draw that line, but I think that there are a number of different options that are available to him. Or making sure that, uh, he could, he could, um, get what he wants to do with his property. It's a matter of.
One, one thing you have to keep in mind that. That there is no guarantee that you will ever, you're never guaranteed the highest use of your property.
That's true.
Never.
All right, so at this point.
Opportunity to develop it as eight dwelling units per acre. Right, and that's not, it's not.
Far higher than most of the township.
Yes. Yes. And I'm not sure in my own mind what the difference is to you. Between eight and twelve. What is that, what does that take out of your pocket?
Well, it, that, that's not. I mean, I don't want to get into debate about that with it at this. Then you're opening up another area for discussion and. At this point, we're making, I think we need to make the decision based upon what we look at in terms of the area. And why we drew that line where we did. We can't enter into, uh, a financial side of it in terms of. Trying to make a decision then as to what are the financial benefits either way. So. All right, at this point. Is there, uh, there doesn't seem to be clear support for making a change.
No.
Is there anyone who? Wants to make the recommendation that we change the boundary? To me, to make that change, we need, we would have to have a motion. Specific to that. Because it's such a hot topic.
I think there's enough at stake with the district in general that we should try not to. Get other residents. Back in the fight over boundaries, so I think leave it as it is.
Okay. Matt, thank you for your, uh, input and your persistence. Uh, but I think the decision coming from the zoning commission at this point is that we are not going to make a change in the boundary.
Is it referendable?
Uh, the. Not, I'm not sure what you're asking. Is the. Article that we're going to eventually recommend to the trustees, and then when they get approved. Once the trustees would take action, action on what they do is indeed referendable. Okay. Uh, we got through the document, going back now, um. To where we were. Um. We've got the definitions. Is there anything in the definitions that we need to? Review? Were there any changes?
Taking barrel roof out.
Ford and Ben, I don't see barrel in here.
It's under roof barrel.
Oh, it's under the roof, that's why.
And it's under the new stuff there.
I'm looking at it under B, yeah, it's under roof, okay, yeah.
Get rid of barrel.
Oh, yeah.
I think, um.
I see, yeah.
We have another one under business. I'm a large retail. It, where it says twenty thousand square feet. I think we need to add the words in area. Because.
If you're going to have a discussion, I'm sorry, but would you go out into the hall, please?
All the other ones say square feet in area.
Yeah, I agree.
In area.
Um, sorry, where?
In business, large retail.
Business.
Twenty thousand square feet in area.
Large.
Where the area goes after or larger? Goes, no, it goes after square feet. Mirror, small retail, medium retail.
Oh, you see that?
Retail or less than.
Barrel gone.
Sorry, Tom.
And, and.
No airplane hangar.
I still don't know what she wants to change.
Add in area right there after.
Oh.
Right there.
I. I was looking at it and I still couldn't find what you were suggesting that we, so you're adding in area, square feet in area. Or larger.
And now it matches the medium retail and small retail.
All right. Thank you for that help and looking at, I wasn't sure.
No problem.
All right, we got it.
Butter friends for.
Anything else on this part C then? All right, being done, then, uh, at this point, uh, we can. Close the, uh, the hearing. And reopen our, uh. Reconvene our regular meeting. And at this point, potentially, we can entertain a, a motion.
Just call the roll first.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, we need.
You ready?
Yeah, go ahead, call the roll.
Mike Cavler.
Here.
Amy Hansen.
Here.
Bruce Hamel. Here, Virginia Lewis.
Still here.
Tom Need.
Yes, still here.
And Bruce Hamel is still here. Uh, all right, at this point, now we're back in the, the zoning, uh, regular meeting. And with that, as I said, if we want to consider a motion at this time, uh, it would be appropriate to do so.
Well, I will make a motion. That the Harlem Township Zoning Commission. Recommend approval by the Harlem Township Board of Trustees. Of application number H E Z C twenty-three O two. Which includes Part A. Article thirty-one, procedure to apply for a mixed-use overlay district. As Part B, Article thirty-four. Mixed-use overlay districts. And Part C, the definition of terms related to the mixed-use overlay districts. Contingent upon incorporating the changes made at tonight's hearing. That's my motion.
All right, is there a second?
Are, are we saying anything about there? Did you say changes?
I said contingent, contingent upon incorporating the changes made at tonight's hearing.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second now for discussion. Any discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none. Uh, then, uh, we will have a roll call vote on the motion. Uh, Ms. McCann, would you call the roll?
Mike Cavler.
Aye.
Kelly Manson.
Ayes.
Bruce Hamel.
No, no, Bruce is not voting.
Virginia Lewis.
Aye.
I'll need.
Aye.
Brittany Hopper.
Aye.
All right, the motion, uh, carries. I will complete the form and I'll pass it around for everyone to. Sign it.
I don't know.
So what I will do, um, based on that motion is take this document, which everybody has a copy of. And go through the. Uh, articles and pick up any changes that were made that are not on this. Maybe Joni can help me because I think are mostly. Mostly hers. And then this will become part of the, the motion.
Well, that's all, you've got the complete list.
Except for changes that we made.
There were some changes. I, I, okay, now I understand what you're saying. The, the ones that we brought up. And especially on page, from page seven forward, we didn't.
Molly already made it.
Right.
But.
So.
She's making them live.
But I'll, you know.
Okay, but, but, but this still, I think, still has become part of the motion, so that there's a document that says.
What?
These are the changes that we asked you to make.
Yeah, he said contingent upon those changes having been made.
Yeah.
So you're making all of the changes, but then as what he's pointing out is the list then would verify. That what, what it is that we approved as contingencies.
So you can give him a list of those, right?
Right.
Yeah, they're all tracked, so when I give you, or whoever, they'll all be in red.
Uh, you can give, potentially, we can give them a same thing, a red line copy. And a clean copy, so they could see the changes. But that'll be draft three then. That'll be the final version.
Yeah, and I think for the trustees, they probably just want to see.
Yes, I think they have asked us to do that before.
They have. They don't, I think they didn't like having both copies. Um, but we will point them out in terms of then giving them a list.
Yes.
We will have. If you will submit, uh, Molly, then the red line and, um. The clean copy, then the zoning commission can see all the changes that way. All right, do we have everyone's signature on here? We do. All right, we are, um. Ready, I, I should have identified the time when we closed the hearing, but it was what, ten o'clock, ten eight, ten PM?
Yeah, AM.
Not AM, no. And it is now, um, past that time. Uh. It's ten oh five, but. Are, is there any other business that we need to deal with here tonight? Let's see, let me get my agenda back out. Oh, we had the minutes. We can do those because I think you, they have already been previously, did we get copies of the minutes distributed?
Brittany looks super excited about the minutes.
I think we had it. Well, then we will just put that off and do it at our workshop.
I think Amanda did send them and I think she has sent the minutes from the last meeting, but I didn't even open that yet.
Okay. Um, and then we will also have the hearing minutes. I talked to her, to Amanda today and told her that we would need the minutes from tonight's meeting. And hearing so that we could approve it all. So she'll be getting that done. And she'll be sending it out to you probably within a couple of days. You'll have that one. And then if you'll give her the feedback, we'll be able to uh, manage that at our next meeting. Okay. All right, um, the one thing I guess I do want to set, make sure that you folks are aware, if you're not already, is that, uh, Amanda. Has tendered her resignation. And she will be resigning, um, well, I'm not exactly sure the effective date, but she's agreed to continue to work. And produce our minutes through the end of May. The job uh, posting is up. I saw it on the website, um. Mike, you have anything you want to add to that?
No, that's it. I mean, her actual official last day is Friday, but she said she would stay on and do your guys' minutes.
Okay.
That's too bad. She did a good job.
Yeah, and I, it's what I told her today. Uh, but it's a health issue.
Okay.
The, i- i- you weren't here last week, maybe, and you don't know that, but the issue has been that even though that we've done this remediation. In the facility here, it still, uh, has been an issue for her, her, so. She has asthma and I spoke with her today, as I indicated, and boy, what a difference talking with her today than. Um, a week or so ago when I talked to her because she had come into the office and it just wipes her out.
Wow.
I don't know what, we, no one knows exactly what's causing it, but for her, this is not a safe environment. So the job is posted and there are a couple of people who have expressed an interest and I know that, um. Kendra and Mike will follow up and complete the interviews and will. The new job description, I don't know exactly how it's worded, but I talked with Kendra and there is an expectation, Mike, you correct me if I'm not saying this correctly. That the person who's going to be hired will come to and attend our zoning commission meetings and also the B Z A meetings. The way that Sherry had done it. So that will be a part of the responsibility. So the person coming in will know that that's part of their responsibility from the get go. Okay, um, I have nothing further.
Make Bush me adjourn.
Moved and seconded that we adjourn. Any opposition? All right, hearing none, then we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Can I, um, you need, I, you have a nice clean copy. I don't.
Yeah, I did.